Twenty first, seven P M. Gonna bring it to Dunbar, board to select the meeting quarter. All three selectmen are present, town administrator is present, the road agents present, and Leo Martell is videotaping for the benefit of the public. And Linda Nickerson will upload them to YouTube and our town website. Uh, we have, under old business, we have some prior meeting minutes to, um, approve.
I'll make motion approve the, uh, twelve P M. Non-public minutes of October fourteenth, as amended.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? And are we gonna seal those meeting minutes? A non-public.
I don't see a need to.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay. Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a second motion to approve the, um, the seven P M. Regular minutes of October fourteenth.
No, we have it listed as the other ones first, right? We have the regular meeting minutes of the twelve known one, Mike next.
No, I did the twelve noon one already.
No, you did non-public twelve known.
Right, oh.
Now the regular meeting minutes.
I stand corrected. I'll prove the, uh, twelve P M. Regular minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second. Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand corrected.
That's okay.
And we're about to go over the next one.
You wanna do the last one, Bob?
Okay. Motion to approve the twelve P M. Regular minutes of October fourteen, twenty twenty one.
Nope. He just did that, you gotta go to the, um, seven P M. The last one on the list.
Yeah, I just, I thought that's the one he just did, huh? You did?
No, I made him change over to the twelve P M. One.
Okay, so.
So we did him right in the row that she hasn't listed.
Prove the seven P M. Regular minutes, October fourteen, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, I'll second Bob's motion. Motion's been made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, cuz I wasn't here.
You don't have to do that, I learned that. Lost a lot of material there.
It's up to the person. We learn a lot of things, only. Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to public comment now, Leo, you got anything? Everybody else is on the agenda? Okay. First thing up for discussion is household hazardous waste paid for part-time and temporary employees. I think last year we did start a thing where we did pay, one of the part-timers helped us out temporary there. And we have a wage scale in front of us.
Can I just speak on that for you, Dave?
I guess you can, yeah.
Woody came in earlier in the week, said that he's gotten, um, help for the household hazardous waste he is down there. The question came up whether he was advertising for volunteers. Um, he was not, he did not get any volunteers to, uh, come forward. He said that his stepdaughter is offering to help out, but she won't do it if she's not able. So based on that information, she is in our system under the election position, which is a temporary, uh, actual type of position. I think it's important for the board to take a look at, um, you either pay them all across the board, or you're looking for volunteers. And it, and these days, it's hard to get someone to volunteer for a full day with no pay, so I provided you with the part-time wage scale.
Now, um, where is our part-time, which line is on the part-time labor for down there at the transfer?
Near the bottom, um, it says miscellaneous prior year rate, uh, transfer, X per attendant, transfer station attendant. It's like from full.
So the thirteen sixty-six.
Thirteen sixty-six is the hour, is the rate.
That's the rate I think we should do, only for the fact that they're at the, uh.
Hey Woody, could I ask you, does, does, Don, Frank Mullin get paid the base for transfer station attendant, could it help you out?
Well, we paid him last year.
I don't know, I, I know that.
I don't think, I would think, since we were at department, we probably did that. Um, transfer station attendant rate of thirteen sixty-six. That looks like the lowest rate on here anyway.
It is. I just didn't know if he got a higher rate, I don't know. No? You think that that's, okay.
So, um, I think, does the board have a consensus that that rate's okay?
I think it's a little low for one day's, one day's work, I, I, I know, I, I think, um, it is low.
They just didn't wanna have them get paid more than our guys that are working very hard.
That's true too. That's a point noted.
I know that the board changed their flat rate from prior boards establishing the election group setup to their regular rate. Because it wasn't fair to go back and forth with.
Yeah, cuz it's like ten dollars an hour before, isn't it?
Yeah, and that wasn't quite fair, so.
Right. So I agree with you.
I just didn't wanna pay them more, more than our guys down there that are working.
I think, I mean, I, I, I see a point, I concede.
Okay, are you okay if Woody hires his daughter, and I think his wife who's been on, on call, she's also willing to work.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
I, I think in this case, the fact that he came to the board, by his daughter asking for, I think it's spot on.
Good. We're actually gonna end up bringing an employee with us, and I'd say if anybody else wants to come, I need, they asked me for at least six people, seven. But, cuz they're changing, we had a meeting Tuesday night, and they're changing things up on how they're doing it. And it's actually determined, it's gonna be a lot more labor intensive.
Oh, really?
So they're trying to get a bunch of people, and they couldn't get anyone from the school. They contacted their, contacting the Bo School, couldn't get anyone to even come up for that, so.
Could we put it on, uh, topics and say we'll be paying our volunteers?
I don't want to give that, that's a funny thing.
What is the date of the hazardous household waste against?
This coming Saturday, right?
He's kinda like that.
Coming Saturday, that's what I was thinking. Okay, so the board's consensus thirteen sixty-six. On that, uh, pay scale plan.
Okay.
Okay, that's said, we'll move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda, which is salt prices for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two winter season. And we have our road agent here for this. It looks like Eastern Materials is pleased to offer a delivered price of seventy-two dollars per ton of bulk road salt for that season.
Want me to explain this to you?
Yeah, cuz it wasn't, you didn't deliver it the last time, did you, or did they deliver it to you?
Yeah, they delivered it.
Okay.
We've been paying for the last several years in the vicinity of forty-nine to fifty dollars a per ton, it's been pretty stable. But there was a significant increase this year. They brought it up to the seventy, seventy-two, two sixty. Eastern Salt owns the company that we actually deal with called Granite State, and our agreement has been with Granite State over the years. And we were, I was aware that the same ownership, but they would send us two different sheets. And we always tacked on the Granite State, well, this year, we just got one from Eastern, so I called the Granite State gals and asked them, hey, are you gonna be doing that this year? And they said they've ended that practice. Eastern Materials is a parent company, but we're still dealing with Granite State, which is where the stockpile is, uh, on, um, Market Street in Portland. When you watch the Channel Nine News, you see those tugboats and a big pile of salt behind it, that's Granite State's thing. And they, each of these companies turn bids into the state every year, and we've always just tacked on to whatever the state bid was. Because we're allowed to do that, move the municipality and all that, and it's always been a good price. So that's what the price is for District Five, we're in the District Five range. Basically what that is, that's the distance it is from their, uh, stockpile. And if you go through this, you'll see some other vendors, and the price is up and down. But they didn't win the, the contract for the District Five because they're, the reason they were cheaper is they're closer to that district. So their in-house trucking is, is cheaper. If you follow what I'm getting at.
Yep.
And you can look at this and say, hey, boy, that, uh, more salt's fifty-eight dollars a ton, but that's only in District Six. And that's close to their supply. And we're over an hour away, if you follow, if I.
We're paying, transportation's gonna be included in that.
Yeah, it's, and that's the way this is, and we've dealt with Granite State for enough, for quite a while, and, and they're good at delivering and, and all that. And they, we've never had a problem fulfilling it, so. I mean, I, we're not gonna get more salt to deliver salt to Dunbar for fifty-eight dollars a ton.
Nope.
Because if that was the case, they would've won the District Five.
And you can't truck it that way, cuz it's an hour each way, it's gonna be fifty-five dollars each way, so.
Exactly, so, yeah, so I, I mean, I called American Salt, because one year we did deal with them, and they were a good company to deal with, but at that time, the salt was coming out of Claremont. And the next year, they weren't interested, cuz they said that was just too far to, uh, to do a project. I did call them just to tell them, Jeff, but I didn't hear anything back from anybody. So I'd like to just, I mean, it's unfortunate, it's like twenty-two something a ton more than we're paid last year, so it's a significant increase, but and you see the explanation.
Have you done the math to see how many thousands it's coming for?
Usually what we put in for, we have to give them an estimate, just so they reserve it for us. And I've always put a thousand tons plus or minus, we never bought a thousand tons. But if you use that number, it's gonna go from a budget of fifty thousand to seventy-two thousand, potentially.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty thousand, it could be, but then again, that's an odd thing too, because we budget for the full, for a calendar year, but the season runs into the beginning of the fall, so it changes. And, and we've paid not, since I've been road agent, I don't think we've ever paid seventy-two, but we've paid close to seventy.
So you're, you're gonna look at about a ten thousand dollar change most likely.
Yeah, it's, it's basically, it's gonna cost us more money, but we don't have any choice at the end of the day.
Comal dirt roads?
Well, yeah. It's just, it's unfortunate, and be glimmer bottom, it's just the cost of doing business.
So, uh, what's the board's flavor on this, you wanna follow the, um, road agents', uh, thoughts, process, and, uh, stick with the company we've been dealing with?
I agree with road agent, I think this is the state, the state, going over the state contract is the way to go.
Cuz of. Okay, I'll sign, uh, my line, and then you'll sign the bottom line like we did last year?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And we'll just get it back.
I think we have, um, sixty cents less than the state District Five on that paper.
Yeah, I didn't know, I can't remember what's on.
But ours is a little cheaper, but it's sixty.
It is fifty or sixty cents, do you want this to sign, Jeff, so she can process it?
Yeah, you wanna sign it, I mean, uh.
Yeah, it's a few of your names on it.
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll do it right now. Another fancy pen, like I gave you this today. That's not where you signed last year.
That's where you put the estimated tonnage.
Oh.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's good. I am done, as soon as you're done.
Okay, I figured you'd let me know.
I looked at the prior year page to see.
How much do we have October, I know we had some October in the, uh, in the garage.
I don't know, I was thinking it was close to twenty thousand, but I'm not sure.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking, I didn't.
Do they deliver you partway through the winter as well?
Oh, yes, no, we, we as needed, they, we fill the, our bin up, which holds approximately three hundred tons to start off the, the season. And as we need it, we call, they deliver.
So lean, this will be in there, you just could've put your email address on it?
Yeah.
As, it's basically on a as-needed basis.
Thank you for coming in, did you have anything else you wanted to update the board on since you're here?
No.
Okay.
That's a dangerous question to ask.
I would, I would, I'll just keep this as a, uh, an item to put in the budget as an increase.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, yes, next year we'll plan on, I mean, it does, I'm thinking this is probably gonna be the way in the world for your future.
In fact, I would almost add another ten percent on for the, for the public.
Well, yes, I mean, the price of diesel fuel has gone up significantly in the last month, month and a half, and I think it's just the cost of everything.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
You don't need to.
That makes it easy.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay.
We'll see ya.
Yeah.
Um, Garden Club, I don't see anybody here yet.
No, I think, I understood she asked me to put her on the agenda, so, I don't know if you, the email there is in front of you?
Yeah, well, we're on the, uh, subject, Mike, you did some talking with the different department's heads.
Right, I think it's, um, the one, I talked to the, the school principal, talked to the fire chief, and to the acting police chief. Their concern is that the kids get in the groups, and then we have a, um, if they're going single door-to-door, I mean, door-to-door, and they're going, it's keeping reasonable space, and it's fine. The idea of having a tent, remember, the, one of the ideas, we're gonna have a robotics tent? And that means everyone crowds into a little tent to watch this little demonstration, in my opinion, is a no-go. I could concurrence, uh, common sense occurrence from the school, common sense occurrence from the police chief, same with the fire chief. So they, they think that, that whole idea of having that congregation is, in that little robotics demonstration they're gonna have, is, should be a no-go. That's their recommendation, as well as mine. I've got some thoughts about, I think it's, uh, uh, last year, if you recall, we canned any activities up at the top. And we said to the public, if you wanted to have Halloween, put your lights on, if you didn't wanna have it, turn your lights off. I think we should follow that, but the question boils down to, our rate is up this year, it's affecting more schoolkids this year. Do we have, and I organized activity at the common, and I leave that to the board, I think it's, uh, it's, we have to make that decision.
They, uh, in the email, they were asking to meet us on November fourth about, um, Christmas tree lighting, not anything to do with Halloween.
I thought you said this Thursday, maybe I misunderstood.
Nope, she put November fourth.
But I can cover that, okay, so I, I guess I can.
So, I'm thinking, cuz they already came in about Halloween.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, they were supposed to come back to us.
Yeah, they were gonna check with us on that, so.
Right, I thought that was a combined thing, but you are right, what they were asking in that email is to decorate the trees before it gets too cold.
Yeah.
And not turn the lights on like they did last year.
I don't have any issue with that, if they do it when it's warmer out, and turn it on as long as they don't turn it on too early.
But I, I think the question that faces the board now is, do we go thumbs up or thumbs down on Halloween?
Now, let's think on Halloween, but they.
See, I canned, we're not canned on Halloween, we're just canned in the organized group activities here.
What were they thinking about doing, let's try and think back, uh, they were doing some things, but they were keeping social distancing, I believe, right?
Right, but ten.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get social distancing with, they, they anticipate about three hundred and fifty kids. And I gotta tell you, they don't all leave right away, they sit there for a while, and it's up, I mean, twenty, twenty-two percent right now is young kids, but regardless, our, everything spiked up. We had two hundred and five people in the hospitals. And the numbers are up every day, they're going, getting higher. I really think that, you know, for the cost of candy, I wouldn't wanna see one kid die, cuz they didn't get candy. And they could set up so that they get somebody coming by to pick up candy. But I don't think it should be an organized event on the lawn, but that's my opinion. I don't, I can't see someone getting sick.
Well, we, we don't have another meeting time before they.
We do, very short, but is that close enough to cancel before they, the event?
That's why I think it's imperative we make a decision tonight.
Well, maybe they'll come in before the end of the evening.
I, I think you're right, I was read that.
We, what we could do is just.
Request of, I thought she wanted to be on this meeting.
We could call and have Nora on speakerphone towards, as we proceed in the meeting.
I think we can just give them a consensus from the board on what we should do or not to.
That's true too.
Yeah, I, I think if they wanna pass out candy somehow, you know, without having it in an organized event, I don't see a problem. Uh, but I have a problem with kids, kids are kids.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Leo?
Well, um, the other thing you have to consider is, they did advertise this thing. I've already heard from different people from other towns that are coming with their kids. So, you know, you, now you're bringing them in from other towns, Goss Town's getting higher with COVID, uh, Dunbar's already climbed, I saw that again today. You heard the chief the, well, you weren't here maybe for the meeting, the chief the other day was a little concerned himself, the fire chief, you know?
All of their thoughts were not.
Well, they, they were concerned that anything where you have a group of people together is, is concerning. It's outdoors, so they said there was a thumbs up that was outdoors activity. And like the school said, anything outdoors, they don't require a mask, and anything that's where there's a crowd of people, like indoors, they do require a mask.
But the chief did say that if they kept going up, you know, he'd be coming back to us, now unfortunately, he's not here, but I think he would've been here.
Yeah, he's got, believe it or not, he's, uh.
Oh, that's right too, he has his.
Mutual aid association meeting, right, so he's.
But you know, last year, other than knowing that, you know, some of the weeks and stuff had it, I didn't know anybody personally that had COVID this year, I already know five or six people. And two or three of my family members have had it, so. I mean, it's around a lot more.
It's that fast. That's the issue, unfortunately, and, you know, maybe it's a good thing for the parents to do something with the kids, and like Bob said earlier, maybe it's a go-by, pick up your candy and continue. You know, if you go to someone's home, you knock on their door, jerk a tree, get your candy, and you're gone, and maybe it's the same idea this way. So that way, cuz kids will congregate no matter what.
So I think, Lean, if we need to send them an email, say it's the board's consensus that they'd like to try and do, um, some sort of drive-by event.
What, what do they call trunk, trunk, uh, is that?
Trunk or treat, I think they call it.
Trunk or treat, you know, so you can give candy out of the trunk of a vehicle, and the vehicles can be spaced.
And, uh, try and, try and lean towards that type of activity instead of the group events.
In a no-go in a robotics tent.
Okay.
And if they wanna come back to us with feedback, obviously, uh, we can even, we can even talk with it about it midweek, we can have a consensus.
And I'm sure that, um, Don will work with me to get something on the homepage of the website, that's something that.
So they can adjust their advertising.
And then out in the marquee.
And with the school as well.
The school.
You know, someone said there, like, I think Bob said, they, they're gonna have a Halloween parade, but when you have teachers keeping them in line.
Yeah.
It's one thing versus kids running everywhere.
Well, and they were with those kids anyway, but not kids from different towns.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, let's leave it at that, and we'll see.
Do we wanna talk, does that really say that be on the agenda for the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that, I thought she said, please put me on the agenda.
So it's on the lighting. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hold up on that and let them talk on it when they come in?
Lights will be on a timer from dusk till ten P M. They'd be plugged in on December fourth, just before Santa arrives. And they light the tree and the bandstand. Margaret Watkins already met with the neighbors around here in September, and they were all fine with the lights.
Wait, what's the dates they're gonna have on?
Uh, they were gonna start, the lights will be on a timer like then, just before Santa arrives on December fourth. And then the lights will be on the timer.
Yeah.
And when were they, when were they actually removed, lighting every day?
Didn't have any.
They don't have it, they'll probably be in the fourth and talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll just let them come in.
Okay.
I was gonna make a consensus on it, but we'll just let them come in.
Yeah, we'd like to find out, cuz we, we should have an end date.
Yeah.
That's helped, because, yeah, some people like coming through town, seeing the moon over on the snow by the bandstand, so. You gotta s- satisfy everybody.
The next thing on the agenda, uh, William, glad you're here as a department head, uh, we're looking into buying, um, a time clock for down there at the transfer station, like we said, and, um, I'm gonna let Lean speak to it, cuz she's done the research, but they're looking at right now doing punch-in and punch-out, so the start of the day and the end of the day. And not doing the fifteen-minute breaks and lunch, only because, uh, it might not give enough, you know, fifteen minutes to punch out by the time you walk over to your vehicle and then walk back. I don't know if the whole fifteen thing, fifteen minutes is gonna make sense.
Well, fifteen, you wouldn't punch out for anyways.
There's a standard break still out there.
It is.
So what, you just punch out for lunch?
Punch out for lunch.
So you punch in, punch out for lunch, punch back in, and then.
Okay, so, my office staff and I worked this week to try to get, to research the, uh, time clocks. And then Eric, with his past experience, said that, when, his former employer, he developed a policy for time clocks. And, um, this is just something that I thought was helpful, because my, I had concerns about the fifteen-minute thing. But one thing I did find with the time clocks that we looked at, of the five that we ultimately decided on, there were three of them that all the comments from the general public, even though they had supposedly four stars, five stars, a lot of them said that the, um, the time clock, uh, lost time. Or, um, it was very expensive to replace the time cards and the ribbons, and along with the cost for, uh, delivery. So we had two that we found were reasonable, uh, you have the initial cost, uh, time cards are still extra cost, ink cartridges are in extra cost and shipping and handling. So the five that we had, three of them we removed because of the complaints with the, with the, uh, comments.
So these are the ones that you thought we should go with?
Yep, if we were gonna go with that, and then, uh, possibly, just for clarification, come up.
You're only looking at a hundred and thirty-three dollars or a hundred and eleven?
I, I thought, keeping it simple, huh? They have all these electronic ones, and fancy ones, and fingerprint ones, and I just think, a lot of them either needed constant electricity, and/or if they didn't have battery backup, they would lose time, and/or some of them need internet. So I did, just wanted to keep it simple. I think that, along with the policy in place, would also clarify to the employee what they have for, um, what they call paid breaks and unpaid lunches, so it's.
So they don't tell them?
No.
On either of these?
Yeah. And that is typically an H R person or pro, uh, payable person, so the bookkeeper and/or the supervisor can monitor it and, um.
So in other words, Eric would be doing it.
Eric would be doing it, yeah.
It looks like this one has a slightly seventy-eight percent rating versus sixty-three, and this one's slightly more expensive than this one, so I'm thinking the hundred and eleven dollar one, but.
If this is the group that's looking, wanna go with, unless we decide at this time, we wanna wait and continue with the timesheets, I don't know.
No, I think with the, uh, the issues we've been having down there, in all fairness to the employees, I think if they feel better about punching a time clock, I don't have, this is very, very minimal amount of money to me.
It's just the annual cost for the time cards.
Yeah, just. But the annual cost, you're all back on a few hundred dollars as well, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys wanna look at these? Look at them, what?
Which one were you looking at, one?
The hundred and eleven dollar one has a seventy-eight percent approval, five star.
If you can get a big pack of twenty-five percent or a hundred and eleven.
And the other one's sixty-three percent, so.
Only people, fifty-four, this is thirty-one, okay.
Yeah, and the time card's just above the same cost.
Yeah, I guess it would.
How's that be, when that's a year's plan, I think.
Yeah. Something, Bob? Tom, is the one we're looking at, Bob, if you?
Yeah.
Um, Woody, when people come in for four hours, cuz you have quite a few of the two, right?
Nobody's coming for four lately.
They're all about five?
Yeah, everybody's usually more than five.
So they get one break at least?
One break and fifteen-minute break, half-hour lunch.
Okay.
I, this, I mean, this policy is just, it's disjointed, I think it needs just to be cleaned up a little bit.
In which, what way, cuz this.
Oh, it's just, um, I, I just, I find it just hard to understand.
Well.
Well, for one thing, they, they do punch out for lunches, and they don't punch out for breaks, so.
Right.
You have lunches and breaks in here, so.
Right, um.
I, I, I think let's let them punch out for their breaks.
No, let them, no, no.
No, have them punch out for them, you know, on the time clock.
No, but they were just saying, I mean, it's.
Lunch, your break is a big thing.
Yeah, right, right.
No, I meant your, um, I meant your lunch break.
Lunch break, okay.
Poor guy.
Yeah, I apologize, I meant the lunch break.
No, no, I'm with you.
All this says, Mike, is that if you work eight hours consecutive hours, you get a fifteen-minute paid break and a thirty-minute unpaid lunch.
Okay.
Then it says anyone working a shift of twelve hours consecutive will be entitled to two fifteen-minute paid rest periods, so I guess I should be consistent with the wording. And then, uh, two thirty-minute unpaid lunch breaks, cuz that's Department of Labor enforces the five-hour rule.
But the part I was looking at, Lean, is also.
The clock in, clock out, just remove that?
No, you can have clock in and clock out, I guess remove that, yeah, because the breaks you don't do anyway. And then, um, any work shift of five consecutive hours or more, they still get a half-hour lunch.
Technically, the Department of Labor says if you break up a five-hour period with a fifteen-minute paid break, you don't have to give them a, an hour, a half-hour lunch.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, isn't, isn't it, Bob could probably chime in, it's, I thought it was, in the, every five hours, they're entitled to a break, break or lunch. It's, I thought it was in the, every five hours they're entitled to a break, break or lunch, after five hours, right?
Yep.
Correct, but if you take a break and you get in at eight, take a break at ten, you've now broken up your five hours.
Right, right.
So they can work up to five hours and not have to be out for a half hour unpaid lunch.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
See?
Yeah.
So rather than get paid for four and a half hours, because you're giving them a half hour lunch at eight. And a fifteen minutes that loses an hour, half hour of paid time.
Well, right now, they, if they work five hours, they are taking a half hour lunch break.
The only one, the only time that that would affect it would be on a Thursday, if you're not working a whole day. Cause the other days, you have a six hour day.
Six hour day.
You start at ten, you get done at four, right?
No, I started at eight, get done at four. On Tuesday.
They come in early.
They're, yeah, they're in early, yeah.
Right, but if you have a six hour day and you have a fifteen minute break after three hours, now your five hour clock starts. You're, you're counting five hours.
So you guys don't take an afternoon break, I, I was assuming eight hours, you took a morning break and you took an afternoon break?
We take, uh, we take one break usually, like, so like Tuesday.
Yeah.
Take a break in the morning. Work for a little bit, we take a break before we open.
Yep.
Then they start lunches. And that's it.
Yeah, there used to be two breaks, but.
Used to do two, but the problem was, we, we ran into was, now you're going like five hours throughout the day where there's nobody working. So it was, but now it's, we take a break. And then we do lunch, and then on Wednesday, because we start so, we start late. First thing we take is br- is lunch, cause it's in lunchtime.
Yeah.
We usually start about two o'clockish, do lunch, and then about five o'clock, we do breaks.
Okay.
So that it's broke up in their day, so.
Okay, however you guys, it works out, so um.
So we won't need the employee um.
We won't need them to record log sheets for anything.
So that can come out of there. But I think that. From past experience, if you don't have a policy in place, it just makes it difficult to, you know, discuss it with an employee, it just, I. We've been told over and over, do you have a policy in place for this, do you have a policy in place for that? So if we go this route, I think it's important for the board to adopt a policy.
Agreed, no, I think if we're gonna put a machine on it, you gotta have a policy go with it.
Uh, I, I think we should label it policy and then put press these four departments with time clocks.
Okay.
When using a time clock, you know, cause it's obviously not gonna be townwide.
Okay.
And actually, at some point, it should be added to your personnel plan.
Well, I think we'll do right now.
Yes, that will be.
Will be in the personal plan, yeah.
So why don't we, with the new time clock, once we purchase it, get it, we'll give all the employees a copy of this, Woody.
But I would like a formal adoption, not today, I'll clean it up and so that everyone accepts it and then you can sign off on it and then.
For insertions with it, uh, personnel plan.
Yep.
Yep.
And as far as.
So I just takes out that one paragraph and like you said, a little bit of the wording above.
Okay, I'll be consistent with the paid break versus a. Uh, the policy that he was referring to, Eric was helping with this, he got language from California, there's a very strict um. Employer employee policy, so some of them call paid rest, uh, rest period or paid break, so I'll be consistent with whatever I use. Um, should we leave the failure to follow? The policy in clearly.
I think so, because we should.
It just to.
We want them to know that there is a time clock there now, we're expecting them to use it, so. It's not gonna, if I have a time clock there and weigh it all back on Woody's.
Yeah.
To uh, write this stuff all in, you know, and if they miss it, he's gonna have to write it in as the department head anyway.
Yeah.
You know, and sign off on it.
Yeah, the exception is, I forgot the punch in, I've been here since this morning.
You know, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to still sign off on those anyway, Woody, cause they're gonna happen. But after you get into a routine, hopefully it happens less and less.
Uh, it could come in, and it could come in early and you'll say, you wanna punch in, you gotta stop working, I need you, or something, you know?
Yep. So what do you think, uh, thoughts, Bob, on that hundred and eleven dollar one, look okay to you?
That one's okay to me.
Yeah, I just wanted to keep it simple, because some of them involve internet, you don't always have good internet service there, it comes and goes.
You see a bubble making motion out of it.
You read it, it's sort of brassing in, brassing out.
Plug in, and then just.
Yeah.
Put your card in and, and then we'll get a little rack stand up for them to put their cards in.
Okay, so I'll make a. Motion to purchase the pyramid time system, twenty-five hundred K one. Um. And let's buy it, buy the bundle, so it gives us the um, twenty-five hundred cards to start with. Uh. It's top loading time card, hundred time cards, two ink ribbon cartridges. And ten slot time cards rack.
Yeah.
So, and two security keys. So with the security keys, Lean, if you have one at the office here and Woody has one. Um, we'll be able to access it if Woody's on vacation. So let's get that whole package that starts with it.
Mm-hmm.
And if you need additional time cards or cartridges. Um, just get them as you need them.
I'll second motion and open up for discussion.
Okay.
Uh, Woody had a comment.
I just have a question, how does that work?
You wanna look at it, Woody?
I don't have my glasses.
Oh, okay.
Something up close, I gotta have my glasses. Uh, how does that work, so for instance, say, everybody's gonna punch in at eight o'clock. And everybody can't get there, they're at the clock, but not everybody can get in, and then it changes to the next minute.
In line within seconds of each other, so.
I didn't know how, cause I, I can see an issue, well, well, he got five more minutes, he got three more minutes, but they're in line trying to punch in.
You know.
No, cause you have the same issue at the end of the day.
Okay.
You follow me?
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, so say, the same guy gets short, you know, I'm getting short, I can just, just asking, it's cause I can.
Rotate the line.
Well, it shouldn't be an issue, but you gotta think that way.
If the Department of Labor came in and audited you for your time clock.
Yep.
They'll see the time going in, the time going out, subtract one from the other, so you're not getting overpaid or underpaid.
Okay.
Yeah, and uh, you know, if you wanna tell them they can punch in five minutes early, I don't think that's the end of the world either, just to make sure that. They're not getting short paid.
Right. Can I add one more thing to the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, employees that are punching their own, words does affect that employees need to punch in only their cards and their cards alone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That, that would be a major violation.
Yeah, but you're not supposed to have another employee punching you.
Geez, that.
It does happen though.
Yeah, you're going to the machine, punch me in too.
Right.
Hey, take care of me, I'm at lunch now.
I really think that's an egregious, would be an egregious violation, it's such a good termination. Just, just think on the box.
Okay. Yep.
You just wanna terminate everybody.
Bob, could you, could you just check me in, I'll be there in an hour or two.
You'd be surprised on some places where they have time clocks, where the guy says, I'm, I'm taking off, so at quitting time, can you punch me out?
Oh, yeah.
We each have a copy of select board um. Of the I R F P, the Request for Pricing for the Fire Suspension for the Town Hall slash Library. Located at one thousand and four School Street, Dunbar, New Hampshire. Um, Lean put both of this in and I worked through it for a couple of items on here. And. What we did is we used a um. We used a template of a bid that we had, to make sure that we listed out the proper items on here. That were required to do a dry sprinkler system in that building complete. And then have a couple of stub offs for the new addition if that gets built at a later time. And this will protect that building in case it.
What does it mean by dry sprinkler system?
I'll tell you, cause I just had to learn this too, a dry system keeps all the water in the basement of the building, in the plastic tanks. And all the piping in the building is dry, so it can't freeze. And as soon as the head goes off, the wiring comes down, tells it to go ahead and send the water through. So a wet system like water would be sitting in the pipes. Where this one here, in case anything freezes. Up on the second floor and or on the first floor, say we were out of power.
Right.
It wouldn't automatically um. Burst pipes and have. A wet situation over there with our library books. Now with this system, just so you guys know, there'll be ten thousand gallons worth of water in the basement in plastic containers. That fit through the existing doorway in there now. There's twenty thousand gallons in the cistern. The nice part about this system is we're not digging up the entire yard, hooked to the cistern. And there's a big flange on the outside of the building, where the, automatically the um, fire department hooks into this if there is a fire. And they continue the water into that building through the sprinkler system. But the nice part about it is the cistern still has twenty thousand gallons there to continue it. The ten thousand gallons will last um, the code reads for a half an hour, minimal. And that cistern would give us another full hour, without having to run anywhere else in town to the fire pond or anywhere for water in the tanker even.
So that cistern is basically a reserve.
It'd be a reserve at this point.
Right.
Where originally it was gonna be tied into, and it would've given us an hour's worth of time, but then that cistern would've been empty.
Right, yeah.
So. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk it by the fire chief tomorrow.
Can I ask a question for you today?
Yeah.
Looking at those notes, um, you just described an outlet piece on the side of the building. Is that what this number two is, the project to start inside the building as a fire pump discharge outlet?
Yeah.
Or will they provide the fire, fire start?
They're providing it with this, basically.
But it doesn't say, is this clear enough for them to say that?
Yeah, that's how it was worded on that other one.
Okay.
You wanna see one, you can see it over at my house.
Yeah. And so, on the walkthrough tool, I'll make sure to clarify it, so we're gonna have a walkthrough date. I'm gonna give this, if, if we get this out Monday a week for it to be in their hands. And then I'll have a walkthrough in early November. At ten A M, I think, on the second. Um, just so they can see the.
November, right?
I thought you said November second, when you opened at the clock.
And the reason we're pursuing this is for life or property or both?
Um, both, but most likely, what happens is, that building. Is unprotected by any fire suppression right now. And being as old and as dry as that building is, if it ever did catch it, would go up in minutes and not be able to be saved, and that's our. Oldest historical building in the whole town right there.
Okay. And will there, anything, will there, if the upstairs is modified, how much modification would have to be done to the upstairs level? With the fire suppression?
Nothing.
Okay, then the.
So, on, uh, let me tell you one more thing, downstairs, because of the nice tin ceiling there.
Right.
We're gonna go along the beams of the fire suppression with a side, sideways sprinkler head, and they're gonna overlap each other. They're gonna be painted white, so they'll be pretty unnoticedable. Upstairs, because they drywall, that's then when it come down through with the heads. And so if there ever was a nicer, say tin ceiling, put upstairs at a lower level, they would continue them down.
Right.
Um, so they're gonna come through the drywall from the, up above, on the second floor and downstairs on the first floor, they'll go along all the beams and overlap.
Is also, um, as far as materials, should we consider, and I want to ask the fire chief this. Um, I have cast iron piping through my home, I don't have no plastic PVC.
This is all gonna be that too.
Yeah.
PVC or cast iron, okay, I wanna make sure that's a.
Fire.
That's right, um, originally.
Some of the homes can have plastic.
Originally in his sink, he put down that he wasn't gonna paint it, and I made it so anywhere the piping is exposed is painted white.
And it's gonna be a cast iron?
Yeah, so it's gonna be, originally he wasn't gonna paint it, the piping, and I said, I don't want the piping to be painted, I don't wanna look at the. You know, rusty piece, pipe over there.
It's rust provided too.
Right.
Use resolium.
So, um. By meeting with one person there, I was able to get this, um.
Is that, the person you met with, is he gonna also bid on the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, uh.
I just, I've already found a few mistakes, so I'll make sure I clean those up. So I can just look at the date that the bids are due, or you've got the walkthrough on the second, and I did put October.
Yeah, and you were gonna clean up and take C off of here, right?
C, yes, that was another question, we don't need it, have to capitalize a little there. Um. Just look at, how much time do you wanna give them to put this package together, two weeks?
Oh, I was gonna say a month.
A month?
What do you think?
So November, there'll be December second?
I know on the other stuff, we haven't done them that long, when they did the whole addition, they gave a couple of weeks, I was amazed, but.
I don't know, you tell me, cause I left a blank here.
We'll split the difference?
Three weeks, yeah.
Three weeks, I'll check the dates, three weeks, and then I'll put.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we open it up enough till we get some submitted bids.
Oh, you know what, I think three weeks is gonna take us to Thanksgiving weekend, so maybe we should give them the.
The month of November.
Month.
That's fine.
I think, if you're November second, three weeks, is it the week after?
And I asked for completion date to be done, uh, February twenty-eighth on this project, only for the fact that. If that building goes to town meeting, I wanna know if this portion of it's done and complete. At the town meeting.
The other thing too is, you might as well get it done, cause it has to get done.
Right. And you know, they got all winter to do it, so to me, it's not that difficult to building the work, and you know, there's not a lot of structure in that building.
Three weeks takes us to um, November twenty-fifth, which is Thanksgiving, so it'll have to be December second that we'll open the bids.
Okay, and they have to be in?
Usually the Wednesday before.
Thank you, you answered my question.
Yeah, uh, so that's the second, so December first, we'll be doing.
Yeah, I'll come in at the last minute.
No, it's not, Lean, you have to go the week before that, you said.
So.
The bid should be in the last week.
So we're, we're doing a walkthrough on November second, correct, on Tuesday?
Yeah, and then the bids have to be in, keep, slide your thing down.
Yeah.
Right there, on the, that Wednesday.
The thirtieth? Yes, the Wednesday is December first.
Our meeting is what day?
December second.
Mike just asked for the bids to be in the week before.
No, it doesn't have to be the day before.
No, no, the day, at least the Wednesday, the day before.
The Wednesday before, yeah, I just get all that together and get it ready.
I didn't want them to come in like an hour before the meeting and say, here's my bid.
Yeah, no, it's usually the day before at three o'clock.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
And then, their packets are ready and you have.
I thought we always got them like a week ahead of time.
No, the day before.
Okay.
It gives, well, it gives us the, it gives us the time we wanted. So I, back to me forwards, thank you.
Same four weeks and one.
And that was all the compromise.
Cause December, January, February, gives them three months to do.
Okay, and this will be.
Make it three months instead of four months on your notification.
Three months, okay.
With, uh, if there's, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, however, if the chief has outstanding reservations, I could.
No, we'll pull it, we'll pull it off there and readjust it.
Right.
Yeah. The only, the only way this, from what I learned, the only way this can be modified is the, the chief can be more restrictive, not less restrictive than the state standards. That have to be done for that building and that size. So in other words, he could come back and say, I want forty-five minutes worth of uh, water time, or I want an hour's worth, and then it'll have to be adjusted.
Well, the neat thing is for the proximity, the fire station's good.
Right, the proximity and the cistern being there and having the hookup. Yeah, you put a pump truck in between those, I think.
Well, I, I, I value his opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
No, and I had already told him I was gonna bring this to him, I just hadn't had the chance, in fact, I called him last week and he called me back, but I haven't had a chance to handcuff them.
Alright, so clean it up so that Mike.
So if the chief has any more bullet points, guys, we'll add it to them, but we're looking just for consensus to go ahead and get this started tonight.
Do you want me to get this out before John has a chance to look at it, he may ask to add something to the.
No, no, try and meet John tomorrow.
Yes, but.
You're gonna meet him tomorrow, so don't get this out tomorrow.
No.
Got it, alright.
Unless I call you and say I met with John and he's all set.
Okay, alright, alright.
I'll keep this copy here with me, and like I said, there's some pricing in here, I'd like for that not to get around.
Well, to be fair to any video, anyone videoing. That's good.
Okay, great. Um, now the report to mailbox, I can.
Can you hold on just one second, Dave, you bypassed the policy for completing timesheets and paying our, our hourly employees, this, these time clocks make. They make this go away, but just for the record, I would like it um, discussed in a select meeting that um. In past years, we were audited by the Department of Labor and we were fined and had, for making changes on a timesheet that were not initialed by the employee. And um, rounding uh, wasn't very clear and um, someone reporting that they got in at five minutes of, gave herself time. To start at the hour and we ended up reimbursing or paying that employee for minutes. Oh for through the uh audit period um that they determined was loss of wages.
I skipped it only because. We hashed it out last week and now we're actually going for the time clock, so.
Okay.
I don't imagine it's gonna be the much time to get that in and start implementing it.
Okay. So.
Well, just I I think the bottom line is we just gotta make sure we're consistent on.
Reiterating it.
Okay, so for the sake of the time card, I just wanna clarify.
You mean for like everywhere, the police department and everything?
Anybody, it it the employee needs to be approving any changes, so I just wanna.
Well, um on a second paragraph of your time sheet, time block.
Yeah.
You could do a second paragraph and. Put some of that stuff spelled out, so it'll be part of our policy. So that the departments that don't have time clocks.
Okay.
Will know. Meaning, you know, Jeff and the police department, I think that's all we have, right?
And a town office.
In town office, so. I'd like to do little bullet bullet points on the bottom of that policy, lean so that.
To time sheets, okay.
And it's equal for all departments afterwards. Cuz there could be a period of time where our ti- time clock is broken down, we're gonna have to revert back to those.
Absolutely.
Time cards.
Warranty period.
Yeah.
One year out and breaks. And it happens.
It does say punch the time clock, so who knows, whoever you gotta hit now, they.
Alright.
So yeah, that's always hopefully, if we can do those bullet points, that way if we adjust the policy and sign that off, we'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, I'll go work on that. Thank you.
Okay, mailbox items. We have an email here. Uh from Norma Burge, Denbarn Historical Society, would like to use this meeting room. In the town hall on Saturday, November twentieth. From ten AM to twelve noon for a meeting. By the way, I informed Erica's call email address, website. Okay. Um. What are your thoughts about that?
You know, you open the door for one, you open the door for everyone. That's my position, I, you know, I understand it's hard for them to find a place to meet. There are some places that maybe, I don't know if you have to pay to use them or not, but. Uh I know this looks convenient and we did it for one group and all of a sudden now. This is another group that would like to use it, there's another guy that kinda I hope found a place to have his.
We we did it for the garden club one time, is that what we did?
Yeah, yeah, you did that a while ago for the garden club.
Yeah.
Then we we remember at the following meeting, after they'd used it, we started saying, maybe we should rethink this policy and just open up to any. Group that maybe wants to use it.
There's too, I think there's too many personal things in here, especially this room here is wide open.
And we're gonna incur a cost cleaning, uh we don't charge, we wouldn't be charging for anything, we have cost cleaning, we have to pay the employees to come open and close and secure. Someone's gonna have to sit in here what during their three hours.
You come over, you're right over.
Yes, but I don't get paid enough. I asked for a raise and the thing is, I think is I get, I get.
We'll give you travel time, five minutes.
You can hate candy out of the dish.
Well, travel time, five minutes.
Just gotta punch the time clock.
No, I think is I I I concur with Bob, I think is I think it's a uh. I don't know if we wanna go down that path, it could be slippery slope.
Um lean, let's do an email back. It's a consensus of the board that we've recently denied to. Um non-town. Meetings from being held. Within this. Um. Town hall workspace. And we'd like to stay consistent on that. Cuz it was brought up for another subject too, if you remember right.
Yeah.
So um. At this point, we'd like to stay consistent on that.
And if there's a problem that we, well, we allowed the one before, it says, we realize that, it was realized after the fact in the min- at minutes of our meetings. We already, we recognized our error we made.
Well, yeah, you had two entities come forward.
And we.
And and they kinda got pushed back, a little bit of a pushback and, you know, you do it again. Who knows who's gonna come forward that wants to use it for whatever group and. If you do it for one, you might as well say you're doing it for all of them.
Okay. I think just be careful on the wording on it.
I will.
Lean and.
Yep.
Just be respectful back to them and we'll.
Yeah.
Let them know that we. Like to keep that. That way for this point in time. Um. We have a formal complaint from a town employee that we're gonna be discussing later tonight in non-public. Um. We just want that's in the agenda. For that block, so I'll keep that up, have that discussion later on. Okay. We have an update here from Chris Remalide and Donna. Um and this is in reference to the pages corner roundabout, Route thirteen. Projects are listed for twenty twenty three and to twenty thirty two.
Seems like it's forever.
Pages corner roundabout is listed number one out of six projects. So. Maybe it'll be closer to twenty twenty three.
This year. I I I'd say thank you to those two individuals who represent the town.
I'm actually amazed that it's uh. It's coming up that quickly with all the different roads in the state.
I'd like to uh just acknowledge Sergeant Romanoff for actually spearheading this and the assistance we got from the New Hampshire. What's the, what's the gen- organization that helps plan wood?
Uh Central New Hampshire.
Central New Hampshire Regional Planning was a big assist in this project, so thank you to both, both individuals of these. Sergeant and uh regional, and some central regional planning.
Okay, the next thing on there is uh. News from New Hampshire DS noticed the town of active bloom advisory in Gorham Pond. I said the same thing. But I'm not sure why it's active bloom, yes.
It's a greenish.
It's a phomie substance.
Yeah, it's a greenish color.
Algae.
Algae, you know, water.
Cause irritation to the skin and pets and.
Well, it's not milkweed, that's the good news. No, Dave, algae blooms are uh popular, are very common in many ponds across Southern New Hampshire and uh. When they, when they find it, they don't recommend you swim in the water and uh let your dog, animals go in the water.
And they found that in uh in our pond, huh?
Yeah.
I know that a lot of the smaller ponds have a lot of ducks and geese and stuff, have had stuff like that.
They've shut uh closed a couple of times or.
They have, yeah.
Flagged areas on it that had it.
Fortunately, Bob Leonard works with the organization and he has posted. On our behalf at the beaches and whatnot, the bloom warning.
Should that be on a, on a webpage too?
I could put it on one.
I think it'd be important.
I don't know how long we have to leave it up there, but.
Well, it's active.
Woody, I wanna thank you for sending pictures of the lawnmower in to us so we could see the guards.
Yeah, while we're on that subject. I showed the pictures to the girl that's in charge of health and safety at the Department of Labor, who's a friend of mine. Uh there's no removal or alteration of guards or safety equipment. So when you had that picture with the strap holding it up, that just so you know, it's a no-no. She said either raised. It was uh either you raise the height or if the lawn mower isn't large enough. Have some type of maintenance program or find a piece of equipment that'll cut it, but they shouldn't be using it that way. So just so you know, and it wasn't uh, it was constructive, you know, the talk was constructive and so.
The mower looks newer than I thought it was, Woody, um. Is that like, that flap comes all the way down flat, so it's like almost a mulch function that if that flaps down, is, does it have mulch blades on it or?
Yeah, but if you remember last meeting, we said.
That's a Franken mower.
Huh?
That's a Franken mower. They took a multiple mowers out of the demo, out of the steel box and built that one.
Did you see that last uh, at last meeting, we said that you could, you know, had the rights to go ahead and get a, a mower that's. Can be adjusted up height wise, you can leave the.
Yeah, these, these ones are at full height.
Okay.
But they did make a motion last week.
So you can get a mower that, you know, works for your department?
Yeah, I was uh looking in my budget prior to all this. And I actually made a few phone calls to a couple of companies talking to them.
Okay.
The problem is it's tough to get anything that works down there.
I know.
Because of all the years that construction's been down there.
Very rough.
The ground has never really been graded and it's never really been moved. It's grass growing in gravel and stuff that got pushed off to the side and.
Even when they did the work down there, remember I told you?
Yeah.
They left all those rocks on his lawn that were, you know, for the um solar panels.
Yeah, and nothing's really, so I can tell you the machine I've been looking at, where we're talking at, is uh DR makes. And I had one years ago that I used to take down there.
Like the field and brush mower type?
Yeah, but it's more of a uh, a giant string trimmer. It has a shield in the front and you can either get it self-propelled or not self-propelled, it depends on how much money you wanna spend. And it pretty much, you know, they're made for rough terrain and that kinda thing. It's, if anything, it's gonna be the better of, I think, you know, we.
So you'll still have to wear your glasses and some.
Yeah, you should anyways.
You should anyways, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so you sound like that's a work in progress, just let us know on that and uh, you know, what you come up with and we'll get, whatever we need to approve to get that, to make sure it's safe. Okay. We, this is our second notice from Donna Dunn, reference to the. Bandstand. And mice droppings found on the bandstand. Um. She CC'd gale on this. Um it used to be where they went and checked the bandstand and checked up in the floating ceiling up there. And cleaned it and made sure there were no droppings left there because. Once there is a trail for mice to go, they tend to follow that furrow trail and. It is hard to get rid of them once that trail's there. Um I'm not sure who we could get to check that out.
I think I could probably get our handyman to get over there, probably need uh power washing it, um.
Well, no, cuz it's in the ceiling there, so it's probably wiping up that ceiling material.
It's a drop down, so it'd need to be vacuumed. Vacuumed out.
Yeah, cuz I don't take the pressure washing.
No, vacuum like that.
Vacuum and.
What about you, some decon down the road?
Yeah.
Decon drops it there. Can you get access to it?
Yeah, I think it's a drop ceiling, right?
Uh it's a, not a drop ceiling, no, but there's a hatch there.
Oh, okay.
There was a hatch there on the ceiling that you can climb up into.
And just respond back to her that we're gonna do that.
Okay.
And we know there's money in the funds for it.
Yeah, yeah, I do have that.
There's, there's a.
Yeah.
The man, the maintenance.
Stand money.
Yeah, but, excuse me. Yeah, I think the idea was she was hoping something would be done to keep them from going there, but. She suggested maybe a electrical outlet to plug in one of those sonar. Uh rodent uh repellers, but those don't really work, so. And and also my thought is that, what do you do about the columns, cuz they'd be in there too, right?
Yeah.
That's how they're getting up there.
Anything electrical, they'd love to eat, eat the wires.
I think like Mike said, put some decon up there and.
AC decon.
You know, one of the little boxes that stays there for a while and maybe we'll just um check it every year.
Okay.
There's only one disadvantage of decon, especially around the house, they eat it, they die, they sit there and rot.
No, they're supposed to, they're supposed to drive them to get water.
Okay.
So just don't let your wife have any. And that's pretty deadly.
Okay, so you'll take care of some of that email, I'll.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um unemployment rates for Primex had an increase of a hundred and thirteen dollars. And workers' compensation rates decreased by one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. And property liability rates had an increase of twenty eight, hundred and twenty four dollars. So. That's our Primex update.
And just for the record, you, you, last meeting, Bob and I took the dividend check, we're gonna apply it towards next year's rates, is it the holiday credit?
Yeah.
That's the uh.
Medical.
That's the medical fund.
But I do anticipate uh holiday credit from Primex, so.
Okay. So we'll probably be doing the same thing with Primex.
So did those need signing, yeah?
Didn't look like it, no, I just signed, signed the cover sheet of it.
Yeah. That update is actually from last week, I didn't see that in my inbox when we came to the meeting on fourteen, so.
Okay. And another thing we'll talk about, non-public uh. We went back to the transfer station last week, it's in here with the uh, one of the employees had gone home. Um it looks like we have an invitation here to the select board. Um for the ceremony for Sergeant Remlar. And Officer Brian Tyler.
I talked to Sergeant Romanoff today, hey, that's gonna probably be a pretty big event, a lot of uh outside agency police departments will be attending. And it's gonna be big to do, and it's gonna be done at the uh, at the community center.
Okay. That's December thirtieth at five thirty PM.
Right, they're doing it a little bit earlier before, that's a Thursday, that's the last meeting day of the year, they decided to go a little bit earlier so we can get out of there in time.
Okay.
You said December thirtieth?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last meeting day of the year, I believe so.
We've, that's our calendar, so we just have it. Calendar here.
That's correct, it's a Thursday, last day of, the last meeting day of the year.
So it's December thirtieth, right?
Yes.
What time did you say?
Five thirty PM, Bob, so.
Okay.
I'll put it about four PM, so I remember to get there on time.
Chris asked me to put it on a hot topic, so I'm putting it on the event calendar.
And just uh speaking of the police department, did you see what happened to one of their cruisers last week, David?
Um. I did see.
Okay.
We lost another one, huh?
We lost them, another one bites the dust.
Okay. That's saved in there, so that's part of that. And that's it for mailbox items. Um I'll open up for one more public comment and then I'd like to take any of the selectmen's suggestions. Um now, because when we go to non-public, most of the time, there's nobody left in the crowd to talk to, so. Um anybody for?
Yep, uh one thing, you guys brought up the garden club. Um the uh bandstand decorations and bef- prior to them getting here, it seems how you brought it up. Um. Someone said earlier, and I hope that there is a timeline on this, so we don't have to look at those lights all freaking year.
And we did already speak to that in a meeting with them.
Okay, because last year we saw them till almost April first, you know, so, and the other thing is, you know. It's gotta, I'm, not just from me, but I, a lot of people have mentioned that it's way too loud out there. It's like Concord and Goffstown clashing in the center of town here. We used to have a tree and the, the bandstand was lit and the tree was lit, it looked beautiful driving through town. And now it's just like blam, like going to Macy's or something, you know? So, I mean, I hope you guys keep that in mind too, because it is just a nice quaint little town. It's not Milford, New Hampshire or anything like that, you know? So, and I know I heard all your responses last year, you all loved it, but. I heard from a lot of people that said, why do they have to do that, so just keep that in mind, this is just a quaint little town.
Yeah, I think last year they came to us too, with COVID going on so heavy last year, they wanted to list parents of the townspeople. We kinda followed through with that. Yeah, I think last year, they came to us too, with COVID going on so heavy last year, they wanted to list spirits of the townspeople, we kinda followed through with that.
They dropped mine.
They did?
They lowered my spirits.
Um, and certainly, you know, you're just one person, but if you could have those people come in, we'll.
Well.
We'll certainly listen to them.
Do you ever see anybody come in and complain though, you know, but everybody thinks that because I do this every week, that I know everything that's going on and I have the answers and. And they come to me all the time, and I heard this a lot last winter, it's like, why do we have to drive through town and see this, people were going through Mansion Road, so they wouldn't have to see it, you know?
Right. Okay, we'll keep that in mind, anybody else from public?
Okay, the, uh, acrylic roof panels. Issue. They're supposed to be in, they're not in.
Nothing, huh?
Nope, he was, he talked to him, he was, he called him Fri- uh, Monday, he was supposed to, uh, cuz I went down, opened the gate for him to bring his equipment in. And, um, he said he'd be back with the panels and lo and behold, they told him they'd be in, they weren't in. So he's hoping, he had to move to another job, can't wait, you know, for panels, uh, not showing up, um, maybe they'll be in sometime next week, he's gonna get in touch with me and set something up, but. The issue, they've been on order for a while.
Send me a text tomorrow and I'll follow up with my office on it.
Okay, he, I haven't talked to him since like Tuesday, when he came and picked his stuff up and they weren't in then, so.
Okay, I'll find out.
Can I ask you a question? Are they leaking?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's nothing you can do to make it that for now?
No, if you touch them, they'll just disintegrate.
They've been fixed, right, that, that, that dry.
Yeah, two or three times, they've been cocked around, if you look up the roof, you can see them.
The only thing you can do is put a regular steel panel on it, and then you've wasted the money buying that when you get the acrylic ones coming in.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't.
I know that.
I didn't know if it was just a case of putting a little tar here, a little piece of, uh, ice of water here, you know, something like that.
Color black and forest green, you know, it's called ivy, just terrible time getting them in, it seems like the darker color, something in the pigment is causing them. And it's not just like that with metal roof, if you look at regular architectural roofs, um, certain companies aren't making certain colors, it's, it's a lot, a lot of supply chain issues with COVID nineteen coming around. The raw materials aren't there anymore and they can't continue to make it.
Okay, I'm just curious if that could be.
But I'll find out, get to the bottom and see how much longer it's gonna be, so we'll.
Like I said, I haven't talked to him since Tuesday, so they may have come in, they may not have come in, but I would've thought he would've called or.
Send me a text and I'll check them anyway. Okay, uh, anything else?
Nope.
Lean, do you have anything for us, anything to talk about?
No.
Bob, do you have anything for the board?
Quiet, no.
Okay, why don't we take and, uh, make a motion to go to non-public then, Mike?
Uh, what, make a motion to go to non-public for R S A ninety-one dash helper, subparagraph three, room number two.
A.
Paragraph A, thank you.